I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Pickwa City Schools Board of Education. It is Thursday, December 14th, last meeting of the year. Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here. Okay, everyone, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, after reviewing minutes from last month's meeting, if there are no changes from anyone, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approved. And same for tonight's agenda, if there are no addendums to be made, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approved. All right, and Mr. Bostick, do you have an Upper Valley Career Center update for us?
Yes, I do, I thought I'd share some figures. They have a night every year that they call Explore Career Day, and it starts at 6:00 to 7:30 there, and what they do is they have students come in from all over the area that are interested in possibly attending. This year, they had around 800, so, you know, kids come through. So, they're pretty pumped about that. I think it was 834 exactly. But they accept about 600, depending on the size of the program and the room that they have. But I thought that was an interesting statistic. It's really growing. And I think a lot of the, you know, I think a lot of kids are really taking a look at the trades now. It's really going to be booming, I think, the next few years, so. Yeah, they were excited. They said the parking lot was filled by 5:15, they had people waiting to get in, so it's a good sign. They'll fill everything again this year, I guess.
Jason said today that they're probably, as of now, going to have to turn away 250 kids from our greater region.
Wow.
Yes.
That applied that wanted to get in because they just, they're out of space. All the programs are full.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yep.
So how do they determine who to turn away? I mean, is it grade-based?
Well, it depends on basically the facilities they have. You know, like welding, welding can take up to around 30. I think they have about 30 stations now in welding. But some of the programs can only take like 14, 16, 18 kids. That's all they can handle. That would be hands-on. So, yeah, so, yeah, in the future, they'll be looking at expanding. So that's going to be going on too, so.
Yeah, that's good.
The good news, yeah, states come through pretty nicely.
Good, good for the kids.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Really good for them.
That is going to be great, yep. That's it.
Okay, thanks. All right. No one from the public to speak on agenda items, so we can move on to Mr. Hiddle's treasurer's agenda.
It's pretty quick tonight. Were there any questions about the monthly reports that you had attached? We're still on target to finish the year in the black, barring any unforeseen circumstances. The second thing that's on there tonight is to approve the tax budget for fiscal year 2025. We passed a resolution in October, it was the first resolution, and this is the second one with the tax budget that's been attached that goes to the county auditor's office. And that's what they use to set our millage rates for our bond collections to pay off our debt. Any questions about that? So those are the only two things I have.
Okay, sure. Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda?
So move. Say it.
All right, Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. All right, the treasurer's agenda has been approved, and moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We're going to start with a presentation by Richard Price. He is a senior this year at the high school who is going to do his STEM honors diploma presentation. We've done, I think, two of these in the past, so they're not frequent. It is, there are several requirements. Are you going to go through the requirements, or do you want me to share those before you?
You can share.
Okay. So to get an honors, or a STEM honors diploma, you have to meet 10 criteria, and I believe that you're going to meet all 10 of them by the end of the year, if I understand correctly. You have to have five units of math, five units of science, three social study, three world language, one in fine arts, two electives that are focused on STEM courses, maintain an overall high school grade point average of 3.5 or higher, obtain a composite score of 27 or higher on the ACT test, complete a field experience, which I think he'll be talking about tonight, and develop a comprehensive portfolio of that work-based experience that he had. So I do believe you're probably our, maybe our second or third one, so it's a really high demand that he has to go through, and he's going to talk a little bit about what he's done. So we're really proud of what you're accomplishing here, Richard. So go ahead and share what you have.
So for the past year or so, I've been working closely with Mrs. Schultz with getting all these requirements. So we started with reaching out to different businesses to see where I could get my field experience from. And Hartzell responded pretty quickly, offering, welcomed me in. So I started there with a 10-week field experience program. So I went for two, two-and-a-half hours every Wednesday for 10 weeks. I started with going through the interview process, got to experience that, what that's like. And then for the rest of nine weeks, I was stationed at the test lab at the bottom of the High Street Hill. So went through, saw the design side, saw the building, the machines and tests, monitored tests, and then sat through design meetings and saw the management side of it as well. So I got to see a little bit of everything and allowed me to more easily choose where I wanted to go with my career in the future. So it allowed me, I, once I sat down with the designer, I was able to, like, I knew right away, this is what I want to do. And they came over and they're like, yeah, you can, you can tell when somebody sits down, they know what they're doing, they enjoy it, and they're like, that's what you look like right now. So I'm thankful for them for letting me come in and experience that. The sample, there's two samples that were passed around. Those on them, I built them, there's a strain gauge, which you would solder wires to, and then solder them to a machine, and you would be able to test the stiffness of the material. That's the main focus of what they do in the test lab with propellers and seeing how durable they can go and how long they can last. So.
That's awesome.
Any questions for Richard? We appreciate that you've gone through the sacrificial effort to earn this. It's quite a privilege. And you might remember, Richard was here last year to talk about the project he did in his project-based learning and Mrs. Pace's class, where he helped organize a map and a schedule of all the places that provided food in the community for people to have easy access, to see kind of a big picture of that. So doing some really great things. You're really, really heading in a good direction, so we're really proud of you.
Thank you.
So do you attach these to like the propellers?
No, well, so the little rectangle, orange rectangle, is the strain gauge. They will cover propellers with those when they test.
Gotcha.
To test in air.
Gotcha.
So they first do in the test lab, and then once it reaches a certain lifespan and qualities that they meet their requirements, then they put it on an actual airplane and test it in the air.
Okay.
That's pretty awesome. And you probably feel so lucky to be able to have that experience so that you can have a better idea and understanding of if you want to keep proceeding forward.
Yeah. It allows you to open your eyes and see what, because you hear what a field is.
Yeah.
But it's not always what it really is, and this allows you to see the insides of it.
Yeah, and that's probably so encouraging for you to know, yes, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, makes my choice a lot more easier and confident.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Richard. Richard, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go if you don't want to stay. We totally understand.
Try to catch for us.
Oh, no.
It won't affect your diploma, so.
Do you need to take this with you?
If you guys want some time to look, I can take it now, but if you guys...
Well, I don't want to hold you up.
Okay, I need to get it.
We can get it back.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make sure you get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
For bringing.
Would like to invite Mr. Bloom to come up to the microphone, talk a little about ACT schedules and the new curriculum.
Yeah, you can do twice. Good evening. As the past few years, we are still required to provide the ACT to all juniors at Pickwa High School. This year, that date will fall on February the 27th. As we, it's a four-hour assessment, there's no bending that, that's how long it takes. So for us to do that with an entire building and hold a regular schedule is very, very difficult. So as we've done in the past few years, we would, I'm proposing that we provide that time for juniors. We will also provide that time for 10th graders who wish to take the pre-ACT. It allows us to have data for that. No other students will be in attendance that day, they will have a virtual day. It's just, it's, makes it much, much easier for us to provide that. So we've done that the past few years, and it's worked really well. I will add, this is the last year that that requirement is, is as it currently is. Next year, students will have the opportunity to opt out of taking the ACT. Up till now, that has not been something that's built into that law. Next year, that will change. So we may see the same amount of students, we may see less students take it. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but that will change a little bit for 24, 25.
How many schools are now test optional? I know that you'll see that a lot of those colleges will say, we're not necessarily just looking at your ACT score, and so some people don't even send it or they don't take it. I mean, are a lot of schools going that way?
There are, there are dozens. Many, and it's kind of vacillates back and forth. Many of them were rarely test optional for a while, then they kind of swung back. Some have stayed the same. Some look at a much wider set of criteria when they are accepting students into their programs. ACT is one. There's data nationally that says GPA and class ranking is, is just as important as ACT scores. There are others that say well-rounded students are what they're looking for in these programs. So they differ from school to school, but there are more than, more than handfuls that are now test optional.
And is that growing? Is that going to grow over the years?
I think it will either stay the same or get a little bit larger. Especially when schools are trying to expand their enrollment base. I mean, it, it removes a barrier for some students to enter programs.
Right.
So it just depends on the school. Super-exclusive schools have not changed, and when I'm talking a 5% or 6% acceptance rate, those haven't changed, but the majority are adapting to meet the changes in the students that are coming out of high school.
Yeah.
And what they're looking for, the students are looking for in academic programs, is that's changing dramatically. Students are coming out with a very different worldview than I would have had or most of us here would have had. We just kind of took what they gave us. Students now are saying, no, I'm coming to you. You need to meet my needs, and schools are responding to that. So, yeah, that'll be on the 27th. We couldn't even do a two-hour delay like we do for state testing. It's just, the test is four hours, there's no way to get around that. So we, but again, we've done it year after. That's the first thing I have on the agenda. The second was attached to the agenda itself. I don't know if everyone is familiar with House Bill 33, Ohio House Bill 33. Ohio House Bill 33 requires that we provide feminine hygiene products for grades 6, 12, discreetly to all students. That, there's Leanna. Leanna, you want to join me? That timing was just right. This is Leanna Michael, she's going to help me present this. You almost left me by myself, which was, you know...
I blame preschool for shows.
Yeah, I blame preschool for a lot. That's where I went off, off the rails. So that House bill requires that, and feel free to jump in at any time, that we provide feminine hygiene products to all of our students, grades 6, 12. What we don't provide in that House bill is education to those students. For most of the kids, the last time they have any kind of education around feminine hygiene, body changes, is grade five. We require one semester of health in high school, and that's it. So what Leanna has done, and Casey Pace, who's discreetly sitting at the side of the room there, they have developed a curriculum that really addresses that. I'll hit a few of the highlights, and then I'll allow Leanna, because she's much more skilled at this than I am as far as the program, to enter, to, to add to this. But really, it's designed to provide health and wellness education to our students, who, especially at Pickwa High School. To talk about changes in their, what they're experiencing, how do they work with that, different options that they have when it comes to feminine hygiene and feminine hygiene products, because a lot of our kids really don't know these things. And high school is one of those times where it really starts to, to become something that can affect them in the classroom, you know, emotionally, you name it. So the curriculum is really designed to help instruct when it comes to that. It will be a two-section kind of course, if you will, that'd be held during advisory at the high school, so no class time will be, will be taken. Students will be given the option to opt out, just like we do with some other things that we, we present. So if they do not wish to attend, they can do that as well. So I'll turn that over to Leanna, you can fill in the rest.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Scott. So Scott addressed it pretty well. In our research, we found that there is not one single thing to address adolescent feminine health and hygiene on the internet. There's nothing in a book that I've read, there's nothing in any nursing documents that I can find. I actually pooled some of our area nurses in the county, they don't have anything either. So we wrote it. This will address in two sections during the advisory period. The first day will be all of the kind of background, the feminine cycle, self-breast exam, why we're talking about this. The second day will be more of what's available to you. So in 5th grade, we talk very much about what Procter &amp; Gamble provides, which is pads and tampons. What else do they sell? Pads and tampons. So I will also agree that 5th grade is not the time to talk about literally any other products. So we kind of decided that 10th grade is probably that really good age group to hit. So for the first time, because we don't want those older girls who could have gotten it in 10th grade to miss it, we're going to do 10 through 12. We'll do some exit questionnaires to kind of adjust, see what worked, what, what they were like, ah, this didn't feel like you gave enough information on kind of deal. And then the following year, we'll start with just 10th graders. After we start presenting and we get some feedback from our girls, we're going to do a peer review. I will have area nurses coming in, those who work in school districts, those who do not, some who work in OB-GYN offices as well, have agreed to come and listen in as well and get their feedback. The goal is by the end of 2024, we actually publish it, putting Pickwa City Schools kind of at the forefront of not just this presentation, but kind of the House Bill 33 piece as well. So I feel like we've kind of hit all of the high points, and I know that that was a lot for you to just kind of randomly get a PowerPoint with some graphic models in there, if you weren't prepared for that. So if you have any questions, hit me with them.
It was very well put together.
Thank you.
It really was. And I know you spent a long time doing this, and your perseverance paid off too because you got a grant, right?
Yes, we did. We actually, when this all kind of came about, it was actually a student who kind of brought it to my attention inadvertently. I grew up in Pickwa. This part makes me a little bit emotional. It wasn't until I started working here that I learned about some of the things that people struggle with. A student came to my office and told me she and her mom could not afford feminine health and hygiene products, and she had been in my office several times, so I was kind of like, hey, what's going on, you know? And she shared that with me. Mind-blowing moment. So how do we fix this? How do we fix period poverty? How do we keep her in the classroom? This is it.
Yeah, because that's something that a lot of, I think, not to separate us, but males just don't think. And even some females that don't have the situation, that it is very embarrassing for young girls to go through that, and it can keep them from coming to school. So it's a huge, it's a huge thing to address absenteeism, really.
Absolutely.
So...
Not just on the school day. There, we have some females who are missing entire days of instruction, but we have some who are missing entire class periods, maybe a half-day because they're waiting on somebody to bring them a change of clothes. If you read anything in depth in the presentation that you've got in front of you there, there are some things that you maybe don't have to change as often, so you're not missing as much instruction time as well. So that was a big part of it. How do we get these girls in class where they want to be? They're not kids that miss class habitually, so how do we keep them in there? We actually designed a research study that we were kind of putting things together, because there's not much research on this either, for specifically adolescents. So Casey and I wrote a grant for the Pickwa Education Foundation. They loved the grant, not the idea so much. So we were denied. That's when Scott kind of came in and helped us pivot a little bit and determined, maybe this is the route we go, and made it more encompassing. And PEF right away, usually it takes several days for them to approve a grant. We knew within 48 hours, I think. So they were excited about it as well.
Well, we're lucky to have you being in tune to that and caring so much, because I think it's going to help a lot of people. So thank you for all your time.
Absolutely.
And efforts.
Thank you to you, Casey.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bloom. Finally, we always report on bullying. Twice a year, we do it in December and in June. So this is December, and Tony's got some numbers and some things to talk about with our bullying.
I'm going to give you a sample of some, some things that could be reported. To give you an idea, I always talk about the things that get reported, but it might be helpful to see some of those things. Want to pass those that way, and I will collect those at the end.
Did you have one for me just then?
I have one for you. No need to read them out loud, but when I tell you that we have actual bullying cases, and then we have 40 or 50 different things that are reported that aren't, I thought maybe this would give you an idea of what that looks like. And then in the one particular, I think it's important to look at what that result was that was potentially actually bullying case. And if you read through that, that's number two, could see what the report was. And ultimately, because we talked about, sometimes those end up in expulsion, right? Depending on how severe, how long the duration, those kinds of things. But in this particular case, this kiddo that was the victim wanted to resolve this or create a resolution with that, the person who was doing the bullying, and forgive him, and that, the kid who was accused actually sat down there in that particular case and said, I did these things, I feel terrible that I did that. And the principal was able to put that together to come up with a resolution for those kids and not then have a follow-up, right? That's the whole goal, especially at the younger grades. We want to make sure that there's, there's no repeat offenses for kids when they're identified as a bully, ultimately. So I thought it would be nice for you to see some of these things that kind of, similar to the ones that come into our offices, our principals' offices. And then as you're looking at that, I'll share some, what I thought was good news. So at this point last year, we had nine reports that were actually deemed to be bullying cases, and this year there were eight. So, yeah, it's one less, but it's still one less. We're not reporting less things, so we're getting volume of reports that kids, that principals can help solve those problems, even though they're not bullying cases, right? So I think that's really important to acknowledge, has a little bit of a win there. Just to remind you of the process, once a report, a bullying report is submitted, whether it's anonymous, name, student, parent, whatever it is, goes to the principals of that building. And then Dwayne and I both get those as well. So if it's something really egregious, we're going to contact the principal, make sure, hey, they got eyes on it right now. Depending on the nature of the report, the principal, principal will begin an investigation. That could be immediate, could be the next day. Again, it kind of depends on how severe that is right, right then. They'll determine during that investigation whether or not it meets the definition of bullying. So like I said, most of the time, they're what you see there. But those times that they're not, then they're going to take a different direction on it. You can see here, if it is determined to be bullying, then we're going to take disciplinary action in most cases, depending on what that looks like. And then create a plan of action as they talk to the parents of both kids, and then create a plan of action for the kiddos that are going out, because we want to keep eyes on both the victim and the bully, if you will, at that, at that time. So, and if it's not, there could be disciplinary action. And then we always contact the parents as well, again, both sides of that. Depending on the level of severity, we, we could do a threat assessment. We have done that in some cases, especially those that end up being much more severe and will end up in expulsion hearing. And then, and then, for instance, at PCIS, where the highest volume of our reports are, they have a bullying assistance team that those repeat offenders will actually be into, and then we have a team of people that are working through those details. And then regular follow-ups with the kids to make sure it's not happening again, because when you see in those reports is, we want to make sure that that kiddo stays safe, and they're not having problems with that kid or those kids, depending on what that is, again, or over time. So some of the things that we see in our reports, which is why I wanted to provide you with that, not enough information. So we always say, and it's required by law for us to have it in an anonymous system, but if it's anonymous, and I get that, make sure you put as much information in as possible. They're impossible to investigate if we don't have certain details. So if you want to remain anonymous, we have to have at least a name of somebody else that's involved so we can start that questioning process. So if they have the name of the person who's causing the problems, let us have that so that we're not just trying to guess, really. Or some details about where it happened, maybe we can catch camera angle, something like that. We do get false reports from time to time, those are pretty rare. But as I went through this first, first semester set of reports, we did have a few of those. And then duplicates, so kids will get in and they'll do a report, and then they'll do another report. I had one that did three, like back-to-back, the exact same report, which is fine, but it does contribute to our volume of reports. We have practice. I mentioned this last year, for the first time at PCIS, they teach kids how to do the reports. And I'll get them, and we react to them and send them out to the principals, and then we realize that it's a practice. So we're kind of panicking as we read these bizarre things that they put in there with their practice. Well, now the teachers figured out, they put "practice" in the label so that I know when to see it come up. Lots of offenses that occur off-school property. You can imagine when we get contacted in a bullying report that my child was threatened or harassed via Snapchat, that's not happening during school most of the time, but we're still reacting and responding to that, and even investigating those to make sure that we're not missing something. Bullying gets thrown around a lot. We have to remember what that definition looks like, and then also remember that regardless of whether it's bullying or not, we're going to investigate it, try to come up with a resolution that's good for our kids. I just keep talking. So any questions on that?
One thing I really like about our bullying report, I think I've said this before, is if something comes across where they have certain words that get to their attention, they're 24/7 monitoring this, by the way. If a kid says, hey, this person's going to fight me, or this person threatened to punch me or hurt me or do something, that, they call. They'll call me first, if they can't get through me, they'll call Tony, they'll call the principal, and they'll say there is, there's a threat involved. That doesn't happen often, but if that comes up, or sometimes kids will say, hey, I'm at, I'm at home and my friend told me they might, you know, hurt themselves or do this, or I noticed them cutting or something along that line. It's not really a bullying report, but they get on there and they'll do that. They'll call us and say, there's, there's somebody that could be in danger here, and we can respond immediately. So I really like that.
Threats of self-harm, harm to others, those kinds of things, the one that will hit that threshold and cause us to get contacted. We were sitting in my office the other day when, when the system called him because of the words that were triggered. And ultimately, it wasn't a serious scenario, but it's nice that we had that feature.
We do teach the kids, at the beginning of the year, physically show them, we log on, show them how to do that. We do it after Christmas break, because, you know, they get that break, and you come back and you kind of want that fresh start. And we do it after spring break as well, going into the end of the year. So three times a year, students get direct instruction on it at each building, but then as students bring things to a teacher's attention, we try to show them and get those reports filled out, particularly at the intermediate level where that really starts to, to kind of happen.
We are, we saw a few reports at the primaries this year. Last year I reported, I think it was zero from both buildings. So, it's very rare that we get those kids, the students, to actually get in there and do that, to manage the system. But we, what we do is when we get the call in from the parents, we make sure they get back into the system, so that it's documented, so we have that evidence, we can go through the investigation.
Do you get many instances on the bus?
We actually have had, not bullying, we get reports. I mean, you know, you can imagine how many reports we might get with that many kids on the bus, but very few of them ultimately end up in bullying. One of these scenarios, and I can't remember which one it was, cuz I dealt directly with it, ended up being an actual bullying situation on the bus. And what we found was it was that pervasive scenario, where one kiddo was, uh, two other kids were being not-nice ultimately, and it was happening day after day after day. Well, we don't know that unless it's reported, right? Uh, and certainly, kids aren't maybe screaming or yelling. So finally, that parent said, "My daughter came home, and this was happening." And we were able to, not only, not only were we able to get the investigation, and we believed that was happening, I had the audio and video of the bus, which was fabulous, because now we can hear exactly what they're saying. So, we're able to impact them with discipline, obviously, but the key is making sure that we're educating them and the parents. So, so that we can hopefully eliminate that. And I will say that the nice thing about that one was, we had a kiddo who was the one that not, wasn't being nice, actually being awful. That was, uh,
Humbled.
Uh, what I would consider disappointed in himself, felt awful about how he made this young lady feel. And you always get that in that chair. Um, a lot of times you get deflection and, and things like that. So, sometimes it's the reality of, "I didn't realize the scope of what I was doing when I had that." So it happens on the buses, much less than what we get from the, the buildings.
A lot of the stuff that happens on social media platforms outside of school, you know, in the evenings, it does come into the schools. So, we find ourselves helping parents and students with that, and trying to make recommendations to get off social media, trying to block people, and to get out of that realm. And if there are any threats happening outside of school on social media, we try to make those connections with the police department, so that they can be addressed, because that makes kids not wanna come to school. They don't wanna come to school the next day and face those kids if they've had those encounters through social media in the evening hours. So, we really do find ourselves having to intervene there as well, even though it's not happening during the school time.
Other questions on that?
Thank you, Tony.
Pass that back around to me, please.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We can move on to your agenda.
Right. We'd like to make the recommendation that the board approve the attached list of donations for grants, um, for Pickle City Schools. We had several that came through. We have the Minute Men for our Thanksgiving lunch program, Judith Bardot for our Pickle Arts, um, club, J P Morgan Bank for the baseball program at the high school, Todd and Lois Wyon for the show choir at the high school, and Jim McRispicham for our Glen Helen trip. Um, they're sponsoring a student for that. Several grants came through. Would like to mention, um, the Pickle Community Foundation, Miami County Foundation, as well as the Delta Kappa Gamma, um, chapter. Uh, the Yonasi family, Richard Donnelly, and the Wendellin Funds all helped contribute to some grants that teachers wrote. So we, we appreciate, um, those funds to support those programs. Recommend the board approval of the Pickle Junior High School eighth grade overnight field trip to Washington, D.C. We've done that every year, and, um, they're gearing up for this spring. Uh, recommend board approval for the Winter Guard overnight program, um, trip to Knoxville, Tennessee, to compete in the Winter Guard International Invitational. They got to go to Indiana last year, very competitive group. They've actually, um, had to jump up two notches last year because they were so competitive in their own range, they had to, to get bumped up. So this is a way for them to compete at higher levels. And they recommend board approval of the attached, uh, feminine health and hygiene curriculum that was presented to you just a few minutes ago.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on any of those items? Okay, if not, may I get a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
So move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the superintendent's agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lyons' personnel agenda?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to point out, I talked about Shannon Butts as the driver coming from Columbus Public Schools, I think, at the last meeting. Um, because she'd only driven a traditional bus, we had her in transit all week, cuz we want our drivers to be comfortable in all the buses. And I think Monday morning will be her first time actually on her own with the route, so we're excited to get her on board. Uh, of course, Barb Mullen will be back in as a F, uh, F S three cook at the high school, which gives us more ability to do different, unique things in there. Um, and outside of that, it's a very short agenda, and you got the updates. Were there any questions on any of that? I like "short" in this section. It's nice.
Yeah.
So, um.
Does she have a preference of her bus type?
I think traditional, probably, because that's what she's done. But, you know, people fall in love with those, with those new buses, I think. Trollflies, in my opinion, they seem to be much more, not having ever been a bus driver, but having driven both of them, just make sure that's clear. That seems to be a more comfortable, uh, position to be in, yes. So, she might ask it for that.
Yeah.
So, yep. Actually, I had a situation today where the stoplight, the stop sign on one of our buses stopped working mid-route. So we can't, we can't move at that point. So we had to take out another bus. The only thing we had left was a transit. He had never, he had trained in it, but he'd never driven it on the route. And we had to give it to him and say, "You gotta go," cuz we didn't have him drive. So, it did great, but that's why he asked.
Totally different. So the transits are the ones that are flat on the front, and the driver's right up by the glass, and then stub nose are the regular buses, the ones that have the front ends on them. And so, we haven't had front ends for a long, you know, like, years. Thirty years, I don't think we had, we always had transits. And then we started getting some of these front-end buses, and they, they drive totally different than the transits. But they have fixed the steering turning radius on the front nose, and so, it's, uh, they're not as kind of different anymore. So people eventually realize it's not so bad.
On the transits or the front?
The, 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 yeah. They, they've changed, so they can turn a lot tighter.
Huh.
Anyway, it's just something that.
You wanna test one out, let me know.
That's right. It's just good to hear where people's opinions are.
I don't think you want me to.
Yeah. Yeah, so, any questions?
I have a, just a question on the, on the agenda. Um, should I, Aunt, my wife is getting abstained. Should I?
Obstain?
Yeah.
A wellness?
You would abstain.
Should I abstain? Okay. Should we pull that out by itself, or I'll just abstain over the whole thing?
Okay. You can just abstain.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up, Tony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So move.
And this, okay. All right, Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
I'm staying.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries and personnel agenda is approved. So, no old business, and we have several, four items on new business.
Uh, the new business, I gave each of you some proposed dates that fit kind of our algorithm that we do for our Thursday board meetings. There are a few different ones that might be around things like, um, trick-or-treat Thanksgiving, Christmas. We do make some adjustments there. There's always a few adjustments that happen sometimes in the summer, um, with vacations and things like that. So, um, these are the proposed dates for you to look at. You don't have to, uh, block those in tonight. It's just for you to take a look at between now and when we have our, um, organizational meeting in January. We were proposing January the eleventh at four thirty, so that, I would need a, a nod if you're all good with that, and we can set that date. That would include you two, JoJo. Is everybody good for, uh, January eleventh at four thirty for the organizational meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That's where you'll be, um, solidifying these dates, looking at these board appointment committees, kind of thinking ahead of time what you might be interested in. You will be selecting your, um, president, vice president at that meeting as well. So fifteen, twenty minute meeting, max, probably. Yep. Is everybody good with that time? Okay.
What day, that was January?
Eleventh.
Eleven, four thirty?
Yeah, we'll send a, a, an appointment out for that. And then, do we have to do president pro temp or anything?
It's usually outgoing president.
So, we'll be fine. So you can run that, because you'll be, you'll be moving on.
Okay.
Okay. That'll work. All right, we'll send a reminder out to that. And then if you could just look at these dates with your calendar, let us know if there's any conflicts, or if we need to make any adjustments for anybody. And then you can look at these board appointments on these committees and, and kind of get an idea of what you might be interested in. If you have any questions on those, um, call, and we'll, we'll fill you in on any details on that. All right?
Sounds good.
Jeremy, you're it.
All right, the next item on there is recommend approval of a Ram thirty-five hundred truck not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, one of the things that has happened is the bed on the truck that we've been using at the high school, and I believe it's one of our last vehicles. Well, I can't say that, there's maybe a couple more. But anyways, it's from the nineteen nineties. And so, it, uh, the bed has now completely rusted out and, um, is unsafe to use for, um, putting the brine in the back of it. And so, um, we have to decommission that truck. It won't work this winter. So I had to quickly go out and find something else to, uh, use. And so, in conversations with Sean, our building a grounds guy, the, the recommendation was to get a duly that, um, we could use to pull trailers with better than, um, what we currently have, especially our big, long trailer that, that, uh, the band takes, and sometimes show choir, but typically the band takes the bigger one. Um, so the duly will be providing a lot more stability. And, uh, this also has a four-door option on it, so that if we gotta move people, um, as part of that, we have a little extra room to do that. So, it'll also be set with a plow, and, um, so we'll be doing that as well with it. It's not as good to, uh, plow with a duly, but we figured the safety of the trailer is probably more important. We're, we still would have three plow trucks in total, so we should be okay. Plus, we have the big truck to do our roads with. So, we should be good on that. So, the problem is, you can't find them. So when you find them, you have to buy them. So while I'm bringing this to you, I've already bought the truck. Uh, it's, um, it's a dark blue color, so it matches nicely with the red one. And, um, we were able to get it at government pricing, and it was available in, uh, at Wetzel in Richmond. They build out all their trucks for twenty-twenty-four, so if you find it, you better get ahold of it if you're looking for one. So, they're, they're already scheduled out the entire year. So, anyway, I was able to get it, cuz that was only one of two that I was able to find, um, in the, and I say in the area, one was in Virginia, uh, and there were no red ones. We typically bought red, but it wasn't an option.
So this is gonna be able to be used this winter?
Yep, it'll be ready. And that's another reason why it's great to have it, cuz show choir is gonna be able to use it to take it. And they're gonna be traveling a lot, and they're all up north. I think all of them are north of us, not south of us. And so, it should be good for the road for them. It's, um, it's got all kinds of backup camera that we can even add an extension and put a camera on the back of the trailer. I mean, there's different things like that that can be added to it too, um, for safety. So, I feel a lot better with them being out there with a duly. So, not best for plowing, but I think it's probably better for our volunteers to drive that thing. So, I'm sorry I had to buy it quickly, but if I didn't, I wouldn't have been able to get ahold of it.
Okay, that's reasonable.
I need a motion for that one.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the already purchased truck?
So move. Second.
All right, and Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Bostick.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and that purchase has been approved. Um, next one? For Mr. Height.
Do you want me to read that one? Recommend board approval of the attached resolution of the appointment at the Upper Valley Career Center, um, Development Governing Board of Andy Height. So Andy's has served on that before, had interest in serving on that. Again, they're interested in having him. We had asked anybody here if they wanted, was dying to, to serve on the board. You all thought it was okay, then, um, he can continue to do that. So, um, he will continue to do that, represent, um, I, I think, the, the community well in that. He's, he's very versed in it, and has been a good board member there. So, you'll just be approving that, and then, um, we'll, we'll send that to the career center, and then they'll officially approve him at their organizational meeting that they'll have in early, um, January.
And is that yearly? It's just a one-year?
It's a four-year.
A four-year, okay. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. All right, motion carries, and the appointment renewal has been approved. And the last one?
All right, at the last, uh, meeting, we, um, discussed a contract negotiation that was going on between us and, um, Native Flow Energy. We were able to come to terms with that, uh, and they wrote a letter of intent. One of the questions that was asked during that time was in reference to, um, can we get the hundred thousand dollars a year upfront? And that answer that question was, no, we can't. We could, but it would all, it would drop down to one point two million versus two point five million for the use of the thirty acres of land for the solar field. So, it didn't make sense to, um, pursue that option. Um, and then there was a question about the term, as far as the twenty-five-year term of that lease. And, um, the bank will own it, so the bank, of course, is gonna make it wanna work. So even if it wasn't the company that we initially put the lease with, the bank would still have to make those payments, because they have a lot of money put in the ground. So, those are the two questions I wrote in the last. Do you have any other questions about it? At this point, they've agreed. Again, this is a letter of intent. This is not the lease. This gives them, um, the approval to move forward as far as just seeing if it's even feasible. But we've came to terms with, with what they would be willing to pay to do that. They were stuck at ninety, but I finally prided them off of that to a hundred.
So that would be settled if we approve this part tonight?
Correct. Then it's just a matter of, do they want to move forward? They have to do the due diligence. So they gotta see if they can get the permits, they gotta make sure that the land's gonna work what they want it to. They, they gotta go through that whole process. So it's just, it's, this is just the first step for them to get, like, so they don't put a bunch of money into making sure it's gonna work, that, that we're, we came to some kind of agreement.
Okay.
Now, will they finish that off?
Yeah, if you've been to the other two, um, solar places, it, it's gonna look exactly the same.
Okay.
And we have some say in that too, through that process. So it's not like it's just gonna be what they do. Like, we have input into how we want it finished, what we want it to look like, where the six acres is located, cuz it's a thirty-six acre piece of property. So, we get to decide where it gets shifted to, if it's further east or west, or north or south, like, we can, we can, um, make all those decisions. So.
And you think that number is pretty reasonable and not too low?
I think that number is high compared to what other farmers have been offered, from what I understand.
Okay. Okay.
So, I, I have talked to a couple people, um, specifically the guy who's farming the property, as well as my father-in-law, and they're both like, "I, I understand why you're doing it," cuz most farmers don't wanna give up ground, but it's two and a half million dollars that taxpayers don't have to come up with for maintenance of our facilities and projects that we need to accomplish. So, right now, running out that farm isn't creating that kind of revenue by any means. I think we're getting paid, like, eight hundred dollars a year, not a hundred thousand. So, he's like, "Obviously, I can't compete with that." So, um, I, I think that we're doing the right thing. Uh, you know, we're not gonna plan on building anything there immediately, obviously. Um, it's just there because we had the opportunity to get ahold of it, um, when the lady from California was ready to sell, and she wanted us to have the property. And then this still sets us up to where, when we get to that point down the road, when it is time to talk about a new high school, then that property will be available to, to use at that point. So it's not, it's not a perpetuity lease or anything like that. It does have an end to it.
We're talking forty, fifty years down the road.
Yeah, when I say that, I mean, we, we, we got the vision of, we don't want. Yeah, when I say that, I mean, we got the vision of, we don't want to scramble for land 40 years from now, and we don't want our predecessors to do that, and the opportunity was there. So land's not going to be cheaper 40 years from now.
It was paying for itself as we were leasing it out to be farmed anyway, so it still wasn't costing taxpayers anything.
Okay. You guys have any more thoughts or questions?
And we'll wrap back around this again. They have to bring us a lease, and then we'll have a conversation about it again. This is just, again, that first step in the process. So we're not, this is not officially putting a solar field on that property, this is just the first step.
Okay. But we do need a motion, right? Okay. Okay.
I wish to mention, John, our attorney has reviewed it as well, and he is in agreement with it.
Okay. Good. All right, can I get a motion to approve this agreement?
So move. Second.
Okay, Jeremy, please call roll.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. All right, motion carries and that agreement has been approved. So no one to speak from the public on non-agenda items in our next regular meeting. We think will be January 25th next year. And before, we're about to close, but this is an important meeting tonight just because it marks the end of some really good years with somebody that we have sitting here among us that we all love and respect and value the time that you have put into the school district. And I think everybody that knows you would attest to that. And we're sorry to see you go, but we really appreciate your friendship and the knowledge that you've given to all of us as board members. You know, I'm not from the education world, but you really have helped me, and I admire and respect you for your heart and the soul that you have for all these kids and the staff. So I'm going to miss you, and I think everybody would probably agree. And I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. But we wanted to make sure...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Everybody knows, we had some really good years with you. You had, you gave some great ideas, and you took really good care of the staff in the buildings. And so, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that being said, can I get a motion to move into executive session? Because we're going to have an executive session now.
So move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There will be action taken after the executive session.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion carries and this regular meeting is adjourned as we move into executive session. Session, and I need, I would like to have a motion to approve the changes to the treasurer's contract that we discussed, as discussed.
So move. Second.
Okay, Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Bostick.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye. Okay, motion approved. And then I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries and this meeting is adjourned.